First thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Anybody care to approve the agenda or add anything to the agenda?
I'd like to add something under, oh, about six D, Municipal Alcohol Project.
Okay, so I guess six D will be the Municipal Alcohol Project, you said?
Yeah. We're not going to start selling alcohol.
Okay.
I don't think, anyway.
So that's your, you'll be talking on that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other additions?
I'm just wondering, we discussed my being on board last time. I don't see anything on there, but I don't know if we want to discuss that tonight or not.
Do you have further information?
I have a little bit more information.
Okay, well, we can add it.
Okay. Wherever it fits here, probably under, well, other business, I guess, or?
B.
Business arising.
Four B. Four B?
Yeah.
Okay, four B.
Business arising, right.
Okay, so that'll be Danny Muse.
Yeah, business arising from the minutes.
Committee appointment. All right. Any other?
I have the Publico Medical Center.
Okay.
Could I add on to?
Six E?
Six D, yes.
Okay, six E, so it's Publico Medical?
Publico Medical, yes.
I mean, we accept the, approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, I guess we have to, yeah, all right. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Contrary? Carried? Okay, any conflict of interest declarations? Having heard none, we'll move on to number three, which is?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, Counselor Murphy did send his regrets yesterday.
Oh, okay.
He was trying to make the note of that due to work commitment.
Okay, so regrets from Counselor Murphy.
Excuse me.
Okay, and we'll move on to number three presentations, 2013 World Junior A Challenge. Says Mitch Bonner and Wayne Hamilton, and I want to see Wayne, so.
I apologize for Mitchell, that he's not here tonight, he wanted to be. He wanted to call Alain this afternoon and have your meeting postponed because of the playoff game tonight. So, he didn't think it would work, or I talked him out of it, so he's at the arena doing his thing. So, I apologize for that. I thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation to your council. As you are all aware, last year, we hosted the 2012 World Junior A Hockey Challenge. It was, the only word I can say, it was a great success. It was mainly due to 159 volunteers from Argyle, Clare, Yarmouth, the whole area. And a couple are sitting there tonight. One who's, they both have said they want to do it again, so that's a tribute to how successful it was. There's a few studies, there's a few reports we got back. We had an economic impact study done on ground where they actually surveyed people there. It came back, and I'll just very quickly go through this, that unique out-of-town visitors, and that's people who came because of the tournament, was 1,013. Average length of stay was 7.1 days. The importance of the event towards visiting was 9.6 of the 10. Net increase in economic activity to GDP, new money in the province, was $1.8 million. The total economic activity generated was $4 million, and total economic activity generated in Yarmouth area, 2.6 million. How they get these figures, I don't know, but it sounds good, anyway. And people do accept them. It was done by, it was commissioned by Events Nova Scotia. The day after the tournament, we wrapped up the survey, little gadgets, sent them off to Ottawa, and this is what we got back. We, because we were so successful, Hockey Canada, we went and started negotiations right after the tournament, and it became apparent they would like to come back, for two reasons. Number one, because they love the area, they love the hospitality, everything went well. Another reason was, I think they're trying to reinvent, they were totally amazed, because they've usually been going to places like Langley, B.C., or Yorkton, or larger centers, then they were kind of worried about bringing it to Yarmouth, where it was such a small base and an arena that held 1,500 people, that sort of thing. But it actually really worked. And I know one commissioner from Hockey Canada sitting there said, "I can do, I know of two towns in Manitoba that we could do this and be just as successful." So, I think we're gonna, we became a little bit of a guinea pig, where they're going to use us again to kind of redo their bid guidelines. I'm here tonight, I've been to the town of Yarmouth, the municipality of Yarmouth, the municipality of Clare, with requests for $30,000 from each unit. And what we would like to do, if we had a complaint, and it wasn't really a complaint, an issue that was risen was that the hockey games didn't start until 4:00 in the afternoon. And there was absolutely, or I won't say absolutely, but there was very little for the scouts, the parents, the fans, the visitors, to do during the day. And we were running a tournament and really didn't have time to kind of organize that sort of thing. So where we have so much time, or more league time, what I've been doing recently is kind of going into the areas to see if we could get some people on board to actually do this. An example is, as most of you here know, that, you know, very shortly after we announced the first time Vernon Dion happened to sit down alongside me and say, "How do I get involved?" So I said, "You've got to be a sponsor." He says, "How much?" So I gave him a figure, and he was back the next day with a check. But that way, I had six teams visit Dennis Point, and they absolutely loved it. They loved the experience, they, you know, he treated them well, he got some good advertising out of it. So yesterday, I met with representatives from the Tuna Museum in Wedgeport yesterday. We had a very good meeting, and Gwen was there, she seemed to be leading it, and they come up with some good ideas. And what we're looking for is to do a lot more marketing. I have the opportunity now with Hockey Canada, as one of the, as far as a sport, website has one of the most, the biggest, most popular ones in the world. And there's a section of that dedicated to our tournament, which we all can go on, you can put all the information about Argyle on there that you wish. We've got contacts overseas to the different countries through Hockey Canada, that we can get information there quickly, long before they come over. And the same with nationally, and, you know, through the United States as well. But we would like to do more marketing in the area. Other than that, that's basically, you know, I can ask, I can ask or answer pretty much any questions that you have, but we're really here for a partnership. We commit ourselves to whatever we, you know, however partner you want to be, you know, we will give back, we'll try to get as many people to visit your area as possible and work with you. And we welcome any part of your tourism sector, or hospitality sector, to join our board and our committees. Any questions?
Okay, floor is open for questions.
So you're looking for, you have an amount, Mr. Chair? You have an amount that you're asking for?
I'm requesting $30,000.
Yeah.
But, anything helps, everything helps. It was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had that little discussion.
Yes.
I'll explain later.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Given that this is a repeat, what have we, I'm new here, I guess, since last October. Historically, have we given to, I guess my question is directed to our CIO here, have we given in the past, or do we know how much?
Yes, in the first year, we were asked to contribute $15,000, and the municipality approved a contribution of $7,500.
Okay, I see. I guess, question to you now is, how come 30? What would our funding be used for?
Your funding, most of your funding would go back into marketing and things like that. What we, we didn't have in our budget last year, or we didn't think we had it, we did have a little bit, but that was mainly because we, the province gave us $250,000, and our ticket sales went sky-high. We, you know, we oversold more than what we anticipated. This year, the provinces cut it back $100,000 to 150. And our request to the town, the municipality of Yarmouth, has come from 40,000 down to 30.
Okay, Counselor Surratt?
Do you have any numbers, if any facility were used in the municipality of Argyle, as far as, I wouldn't say a restaurant, but would you have anything as far as lodging, like, you know, any rooms in Publico that somebody say that from that? Would you have any numbers?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I believe there was people that stayed at the Red Cap, but I'm not 100% sure.
I think yes, if I remember right, in fact, I remember on the website, there was, yes, I had anybody that had places available for people to stay, and you'd put your name in there if you had some other place. And I kept on looking at that, and I, again, I forget now, but I know there's, I know some places never got any requests and that.
No.
Most of it stayed in the town of Yarmouth.
Most of it stayed in the town, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Muse? In the last tournament, how much did, total, how much of sponsors, what did you collect? Do you remember? Like, how much did you, were you able to come up with, with sponsors? Total, including the government and whatever, what were your funds?
Probably close to 400,000.
400,000. And with that, did you, did you end up having, did it end up costing you more than what the sponsors, or were you able, with the ticket sales and everything, were you able?
We actually made a profit.
You made a profit, so that, do you expect that this year might cost you more? Do you expect, do you expect the, I know the ticket, ticket sales were very, very good.
Yes.
Do you expect the same results this time, do you think?
It's difficult to say, you know, it's a gamble to do something back-to-back. The initial renewal of packages has been very good, but where it goes from there, it's difficult to tell. The reason, last year, I know, you know, a couple units that were late coming on board with monies, the ticket sales happened at the last moment, you know, we're known for that in this area, to wait till the last minute to decide which, what we're going to do. But all in all, it worked out well, but, and Hockey Canada puts a lot of money into it. You know, people don't realize just how much Hockey Canada actually, in dollars, that they put into it.
So with the profit, and is that going again, is that going in this, in this tournament?
Part of the contract, when you take on a tournament such as that, whether it's, you know, the World Junior A, or, I won't compare it to the World Juniors, because I think right now, a community that wants the World Juniors has to put up something like $21 million. So, we're not, anywhere's near there. However, there is a, if there is a profit, one-third of it goes to Hockey Canada, one-third of it goes to the Canadian Junior Hockey League, who supply all the players. Hockey Canada supplies the teams from overseas, the Junior Hockey League provides all the players, they pay for them coming here and things like that. And one-third to the host committee.
Okay.
Now, what we did, one-third, the Canadian Junior Hockey League, this is their baby, they want it, their third. So, and Hockey Canada, and the host committee have put their money back into it. Hopefully, that we will, we will maybe show a little bit more profit next time, or a little bit of profit. And that monies will all be, Hockey Canada's and the host committee's monies will all be put back into a legacy in the area, or as a legacy in the area.
Counselor Donaldson?
He just asked, answered the majority of my questions to do with Hockey Canada, how that worked. Just a suggestion, have you approached the old Argyle Lodge? Because the owner of that is very proactive in tourism and special events with the big sea kayak event coming this fall.
I'm hoping to, you know, I really, I would like to, anybody that, our problem is putting on the tournament and running the tournament, you only have so many hours and so many people. To embrace the tourism sector and the hospitality sector, you know, we're looking for them to come to us. Like, if I bring in 500 people, or 1,013 people, if we bring those into the area, someone has to look after them, other than the tournament times. When the games are on, they're ours.
I'll see him Thursday night, I'll mention the tournament to him.
Yeah, he's very, he's very well aware of it, you know, I mean, you know, we discussed it last time.
Okay.
It's just that it's?
I didn't know, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, but, no, he's, I'd love to have him, you know, even work partner with someone else down here and do, I got an email today from the Rotary Club, like, just putting on a lobster dinner, they're thinking about doing some lobster dinners or lunches in town, or whatever, but that sort of thing, a unique experience. We've got so many possibilities in this end of the province, you know, our hidden gems are big, are huge. But it's no good for me to bring 40 people to somewheres unless somebody's home to greet them and tell them a story. People like to be told stories.
Okay. Counselor Surratt, you have another question?
Quite, or really a comment. I know that the last tournament certainly created quite a buzz, you know, around where I'm in my business.
Yeah.
That the whole week, that's all the talk was about. And I know that a lot of the people of Argyle did go, and why's the tournament, and were quite excited about it, and I will support an amount. What it'll be, we'll decide here, but I'm in favor of supporting the amount.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You know, we're not going to make a decision here tonight, probably, but we will, before too long, budget time, probably, or whenever. I suppose the sooner you find out, the better it is, but?
It is, but it's, you know, it's not, one thing, and, you know, everyone, I think, at the table knows Mitch Bonner, one thing that he warned us right quick in the last year is, you know, we will not be spending money we don't have.
Yes.
So we kind of, and that's, you know, probably more the reason we had a profit last year, because we didn't get it until late, so.
Yeah.
Or we'd have spent it.
Okay, any more questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Wayne Hamilton.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne, good job.
Okay, we'll move on to business arising from the minutes. First one is the Surratt Island webcam, or the Indian Slough Bridge webcam. I'll just read this out. At the January 10, 2012 regular council meeting, council received a letter by Surratt's Island resident raising the possibility of having a webcam installed at the Indian Slough Bridge construction site to capture the demolition and reconstruction of the bridge. At this meeting, council passed a motion to approve the purchase of a camera from Quistow, is it? What's, how do you pronounce that?
Qristow.
Quist, yeah. And have it installed at the Indian Slough Bridge as part of the 2012-2013 fiscal budget, with Scott Muse coordinating with the replacement committee to arrange for installation, conditions on arrangement for a proper location and suitable power source. Following the motion, Deputy Warden Donfremo suggested to request that the Department of Transportation Infrastructure Renewal install a camera. A consensus by council was established, and staff contacted the department, which in turn installed a camera at no cost. At our March 12, 2013 regular council meeting, the replacement committee raised concerns of the quality and the location of the camera, and requested council to honor their original motion. Okay? Due to the inaccuracies of information presented to council at the January 10 regular council meeting, it is not possible for the CIO to execute the motion at this time. At this time, the location and financial details are being reviewed furthermore, and the Office of the CIO recommends deferring this item to the regular council meeting on April 9. So we will discuss it at our regular council next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to four A, or four, I guess, B maybe, I'm not sure, I guess the A, the Medical Services Corporation approval of contract. You have an attachment with 17 pages. And basically, we're looking for inter municipal service agreement between Argyle, municipality of Argyle, town of Yarmouth, and the municipality of Yarmouth. Approval, I guess, for a not-for-profit society, and to approve the signature of the contract. We're only one part of the contract, if I, you may add, CIO Muse?
For those of you who are on the Industrial Commission board, you will be familiar with the conversations around separating the Medical Services Corporation from the regular operations of the Industrial Commission. There's a lot of reasons why that would be proper to do. We are moving ahead with that, and this agreement is to create the, to create the nonprofit organization, so that we can move forward. The significance of it being nonprofit organization and not a municipal corp, corporation, is that it allows us to, what will happen is, the municipality of Argyle will then contribute a grant to this organization, no different than it contributes a grant to the Industrial Commission. And so what it does is, because the mandate is for medical services, this in fact is authorized under Section 65 AU of the Act, where we would, it's the same section that we would authorize contributions to nonprofit organizations in our community. So the fact that it has a mandate for medical services, this particular organization will take care of the operation, the operations of the medical centers, both in Publico and in Yarmouth, and also any and all recruitment contributions that come from the municipality will actually, because we have a partnership with Yarmouth and the town of Yarmouth, we would flow the money to this organization, and this organization would then execute contracts with potential general practitioners. The existing contracts we have with GPs now, the intention is to transfer them into this organization. And this is, we're looking to do this for a variety of reasons. One of the reasons is to clean up, is to clean this up, this is the technical way that it's supposed to be done. So, we were using the Industrial Commission in the interim, but technically, the way that the recruitment funds and the way that the operational losses of the clinic are being paid, are much cleaner in this type of organization. I would recommend that the, we, the CAOs have examined this contract on a number of occasions, and we did get legal consultation, professional services on the contract. We're satisfied with the agreement. It does force us in, it is, which I think is a positive attribute of the contract. We're partnering with two other organizations, and we want to have some assurance that the three parties are, and will continue to be committed to doctor recruitment and clinic operations. So I would recommend that council approve a signature of this contract. Obviously, that's going to be conditional on the other two signing in order for it to be executed. So the motion can be just simply to approve the signature of this contract and the creation of this society, from your perspective. If you have any questions, certainly, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions at this time? Counselor Surratt?
The, when this moves over, maybe I missed that, at the Industrial Commission level, when it moves over, we have Greg Shea, that's the manager, I guess you would call it, Greg Shea of the Industrial Commission. When something like this moves over to this, to this society, you'll need somebody that knows what's going on, because from, I mean, you know, the three of us that are on it, and yourself, there's a, there's a lot that is going on, so somebody would have to know what's going on. So have you, has that been thought, or maybe not at this level yet?
Well?
It'd have to be a smooth takeover by whoever.
What will happen is that the staff, I'm going to say that the staff at the medical clinic level will be, going forward, will be paid for by, the society will then pay?
Of course.
Pay them.
That's right.
In terms of the interim manager, Mr. Shea, for the commission, I fully expect that, at least in the interim period, that that would not change. So if there's an outlet, like, in the Industrial Commission, financially, there's a fee that the Industrial Commission is paying for the services of Mr. Shea.
Absolutely.
So I would, I would fully expect that there would be an allocation, or at least partial allocation of his time to this society.
Did we get it on its feet?
Yeah, and I don't expect that, there are still some, some things we're ironing out in terms of the operation of the clinics, and obviously, you know, obviously, our goal is to fill them with doctors, but then there are times where, such as now, where the Harbor South Clinic, as an example, really only has two doctors.
Right.
Currently, so that's probably at its lowest end, it's had usually three or four doctors, it has the capacity for eight. So obviously, the more doctors are, the better it is fiscally for us, and obviously, for the residents in terms of service.
Right. One quick final question, is, and Alain, maybe you can answer that, I was reading on the contract, that there's a five-year, you have to be committed for five years? I wondered, like, the municipality of Yarmouth, and I'm not pointing anybody here, but just a question, if they decide to pull out where they don't have, although they have a very good benefit out of it, because the doctors that are in the Publico Medical Clinic, and the ones at Harbor South, their people, their residents go to these doctors, too. So I guess when I was reading it, there's a five-year, five years you have to stay in, I don't think that Yarmouth, although they don't have a clinic then, would look to pull out, because it benefits their residents. Might be an unfair question, really, but?
I certainly can't answer?
No.
What they're going to do, but of course, if they execute the agreement, they're?
Locked in.
They'll be committed for five years, so?
Kind of an unfair question.
That's what I like about the contract, it really, it, you know, puts all three councils?
Together.
Together, and makes them decide, at least for the foreseeable future?
Yeah, thank you.
What it's going to do.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Donaldson?
So if I understand rightly, in the interim, you're going to put a person in place, you're thinking probably Greg Shea? Will, is he available with the Industrial Commission, in his job with the municipality of District of Yarmouth? Would it be, will he be available, you think?
I think he'll, I think that it'll be an interim measure, how we move forward from there, I think?
That was my next question.
Needs further planning.
Is there going to have to be another full-time employee to oversee the two clinics, or existing staff can deal with?
I don't foresee, really, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to take a look at the management of the clinics themselves on location. Both clinics do have office managers. So we're going to look at that model and examine that, and make sure that that still works for us, in the way that it is currently operating. Because you have both managers, one in each location, you do have a lot of the day-to-day operations that are being handled by those individuals. So really, at the top level, I would not consider that to be a full-time piece of work. So the municipal units are going to have to iron that out. At least in the short term, we have a short-term plan with Greg Shea, and Greg has been very good. I mean, he's been, he's learned a lot about the clinics, and I think we'll really want to? to push to have Greg stay on a little longer with the clinics. So, so this may not be an issue immediately, but, but I, I don't see that he's going to be a long-term solution to, to this, and there may be ways for municipal units to offer some leadership separately. There could be some, some local leadership here in Aragil that could handle Pumniko Clinic, that's another possibility, and, and management or leadership at the town level that could manage some of the issues of the Harbor South Clinic. That's not beyond the realm of possibility, but is certainly not addressed in this agreement. This agreement is solely to, to segregate that operation in a, in a new corporation, but there's still a lot of operational semantics we need to iron out. So in the meantime, we're creating the shell, but the execution is going to still be at the commission level.
I like, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't want to see us start spending large sums of money on, on, on medical, that isn't actually going to medical management, I guess, because I'll be the first to admit, like, years ago, when we very, for the new councils, when we first looked at doctor recruitment, it was the first time we was asked to, to get involved with, with the medical side of things, and it was always, I always looked at it as a provincial responsibility funded by the federal government, and I said at the time that I think we're going down the wrong road. We're going to end up spending lots of money in, in something we're not responsible for. I've changed my mind on that, but we are spending lots of money, and we seem to be keep getting in deeper and deeper, and it's really not our mandate to look after medical issues. But after at least ten years, we're one less doctor than we had ten years ago, so we really haven't made any gains, other than a little bit of brick and mortar and, and funding some jobs that work in those places. But it's, it hasn't worked for us yet, but we're still going in the right direction, so, but we are, like, I was initially against it years ago, but, so, that's my little spiel for tonight, I hope.
Okay.
But.
Because we used to have a doctor in town.
We don't have that doctor, no more.
Anybody else? I think what we're looking for is a motion to approve the signature of the contract. Moved by Counselor Thuret, seconded by Counselor LeBlanc. You've all heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, motion carried. Number four B, business rising from the minutes, Danny Muse, committee appointment. I guess you have some more details for us?
The, I, I did speak with, I, I met, I met the secretary of the organization.
And which is?
Darlene.
No, what organization is it?
Oh, sorry.
So everybody's on the page.
Yeah, it's the Southwest Noah Biosphere, there's another Biosphere Reserve.
Yeah.
Right. And the, the, the cost to the municipality here would be my, my travel. Most of the meetings that they have are away from, from here. I mean, because, I mean, they, they do have them here, but a lot of them are either in Liverpool, Annapolis, and they, they rotate. Now, that would be, that would be the only expense that, that would be incurred by the municipality, would be my, my, and if there was meals, if there happened to be meals. Since, since we, we discussed this last meeting, I've, I've kind of had second thoughts as well.
Okay.
Whether or not, whether or not I wanted, they, they're all supposed to meet quarterly, but apparently, they've been meeting monthly now. I don't know how long that's going to go. There's a, I got an email here. Perhaps, this came from the CIO. Did you, did, did you check with other areas that, that, there's, it says here, we no longer, no longer appoint reps to boards that we do not create, or are not required through an agreement or legislation to have reps on. I don't know, do we do that? Is this going to be something that, out of the ordinary for us, if we, if, if I was appointed to that, to that board?
I think most of, most of our appointments do have an attachment to, I guess, a municipal or previously municipal endeavor. I'm trying to think of, like, a lot of our ad hoc committees are specific to, to some of the things we do in terms of medical recruitment, et cetera. Trying to think, like, Titleview and Harborside or Meadows Board would be an example where we don't fund them, but there, there was a time where municipalities were a lot heavier involved, but, but that relationship continued. I'm just trying to think of some that could fit what you're describing, and I would say that those, the YMCA would be one, where, because we had given quite a bit of funding to the Y, we'd been invited to be part of the board. I think some municipalities are moving away from that, only because there's a lot more boards and subcommittees and ad hoc committees that come up with our expanding responsibilities that are coming from, you know, the provinces download, for the lack of an appropriate term, but, you know, some, some of the other topics or issues that we're, that we're addressing, I think there's some towns and municipalities that have cut back.
It's just that, I mean, I, I'm not sure what the municipality, is the municipality going to gain anything by, by having a member of the municipality on that, on that, on that board? I, I, I don't know enough about the board to be able to answer those questions, because I, I really don't know exactly what the board does and what, what the, and what the organization does that would affect us. I, I, you know, I mean, are we, am I, am I going on a board that we don't really need someone there? You know, like, are we going to gain anything, I mean, by, by my being there? And if not, then I would just assume, say, find someone else. But if the board, if the, the council here feels that they would like to have somebody there, then I don't mind taking it, but I think that's going to be a decision that, that the council is going to have to, to make, and not just my decision.
Counselor Thuret first.
I guess maybe I, I, I can just answer on my, my personal behalf is that if, if the ask was made to the municipality, instead of an individual counselor, that's different, but where it comes from, an individual counselor, I think that's where I would draw the line, and that's my opinion. Yeah, that's just what I want to let you know.
Okay. Counselor Dawson.
Just to understand a little more, Danny, is this, is this the group that, that looks at parcels of land and decides whether they should be protected or not? It could be an awkward situation for you to be on that board, because in the past, they've suggested parcels of land. We've had groups come here to lobby council to support or not support, so council has had to make a decision on, on whether we supported the presentation, and then a letter would be drafted for this group to present to this organization, whether they was in favor or against, it didn't really matter, but we had to make a decision. So I don't know if you'd feel awkward sitting on this board, making these decisions on this piece of land, and then somebody coming to council and, and wanting to oppose it, what the, so, I don't know, that's just food for thought, I mean, because that has happened before. We had no members on the board, but.
Anything else, Counselor Muse?
I'm not a hundred percent sure if that's exactly what it is, but I know they deal with, like, the Tobiiatic and, you know, that type of, of, of places that they, that they deal with, or, or issues that they deal with. So maybe you're right, you know, I don't really know. I don't know enough about this to be able to, to say, and I can say who asked me, by the way. I was asked by Vaughn from, from, apparently, they're on this, on this board.
Yeah.
And he's the one who gave me a call, or maybe Charles, I think Charles is the one who gave me a call. And at the time, I said yes, but it would have to, I would have to have the okay from council in order to, to do that. And then I, I got a, an email, he, he submitted my name, and right away, I got an email saying that they needed a letter from the council appointing me to this board. It won't hurt my feelings one way or the other, if, you know, if council decides that maybe it's not a good idea to, to have a member there, so I'll just have to let them know, that's all. And, and perhaps, if I don't get, if I, if I don't go, that may be a letter from council, would that be appropriate? And that's all, that's all I have.
Warden Donthermo.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I'm not sure if we're confusing this with that group that was, that wanted to add all that protected land that we had the meetings about two years ago. This is not the same thing, not quite, but, but they are dealing with protected land property, of course. And, and the reason probably why Tropoint Lodge are interested, and I mean, one of the good reasons is probably with that dark sky and all of that, you know, it's part of that, but I'm, I'm not sure about that.
Any more discussion? CIO Muse.
The, the objectives of the South Novo Biosphere Reserve Association is, is to support conservation efforts, and they, they basically focus on, and I'm getting this from their website, conservation efforts for collaboration, for culture, promoting the integrity of cultural resources, for industry promoting and encouraging traditional and temporary resource management. So they're, they have, they have a vision, they have a mission, they envision a healthy, sustainable biosphere, and this is the UNESCO Biosphere that we're, that, that we are a part of. So I believe, and, and thank you, Chris, for sending this along, is there's also board of directors there that I, they, they would, I guess ideally, they ideally wish to be governed by a volunteer board of directors with multiple disciplines. So that's, I guess they're including industry and development directors, non-government directors, municipal government, and First Nations directors. And so specifically, they talk about municipalities in Annapolis, Dibby, Yarmouth, Shubur, and Queen, so Charles or Vaughn has approached Counselor Muse for that, and, I mean, it's entirely up to the municipality. There is no requirement to, to be on this board. It would be similar, I think, if TRIPA was to ask us to have a board member. So, so, I mean, really, traditionally, we have not, we don't have a policy that says you can't or you can, so we really deal with them on a case-by-case basis.
I know, you know, I was also asked to be on that board by, by Vaughn, but for me, I just didn't have the time in my schedule, meetings in Liverpool, in Digby, and wherever, so, you know, at the time, I mean, you know, it's, you know, I think it would be an interesting committee to be on, but for me, it was, you know, the time commitment, I just couldn't do it, so. Any other comments or thoughts from council? I think Counselor Muse is probably looking for a little bit of direction here.
You probably did enough as it is, you know, going on that.
And this is what, sorry.
Yeah. Counselor Muse.
And, and this is why I'm, I'm saying, you know, I mean, I'm involved in quite a few committees, I find it, I find it fairly busy, and then I don't know, if, if this was a committee that, that meets, when it said quarterly, well, you know, I can handle that, but then I get, I get an email that same night, or same day, from, from the chair say, or the secretary, saying, well, yeah, it is quarterly, but we've been meeting pretty much monthly, sometimes even more than, than, than once a month, and I don't know that I want to be tied down to, to have to travel, you know, those distances. And every meeting that she's, she's told me about is in Liverpool, and the reason being, apparently, most of the meetings that they have are attended by people from that area, so they, they said, she, she said they, they've gone to Annapolis where, where there was, I don't know how many people going from Liverpool to Annapolis with two people from Annapolis there, you know? And, and, so they try, I, I think a lot of the meetings are going to be in that area, so I, like I said, it certainly, if, if, if council doesn't feel that we're going to gain anything, I would just assume probably not be on it. If you feel that it would be a benefit to the municipality and to council, then yes, I'll, I'll commit myself to that.
Counselor LeBlanc.
My advice would be to take it with grain of salt, I guess, but given the fact that there is possible issues with conflict, and given the fact that we're not exactly quite sure if there's any benefits to our council, I'd say stay clear, and by the sounds of it, you don't seem exactly enthused about being on this committee. Stay clear of it, but if you feel like you should be on the committee, or if you feel at least pressure from your constituents to be on the committee, well, a little more homework to what it actually entails, how often they meet, and exactly what the benefits could be, well, then it could be revisited. It's kind of my opinion.
Counselor Thuret.
Stay clear of it, that's it.
Counselor Book.
Just, yeah, I said, well, exactly what I was going to say, so if you feel that you don't want to be part of it, don't go, and, and it's not a committee that you have to be on, stay clear.
Warden Donthermo.
Mr. Chair, question for Danny, the secretary, is it the same lady we had the discussion with two, two, two weeks ago?
And maybe you, you, we're, we're going to be, you know, I don't want to say anything.
I know.
Okay.
So she's the secretary of the board, yeah. So I guess, I guess if we're, if we say stay clear, I guess we're, we should write them a letter from council.
Yeah.
Stating that we're not going to have a representative or something.
Although a request was given.
I'm not sure about the wording, but, but I think, another thing, I think the, the request should come to council also, and not from, not to an individual, you know, I know it happens, and.
Absolutely. Not your fault.
No, no. Counselor Muse.
The, the representative that they want on there is not specifically to, to, to a council, it's to represent Yarmouth County, right? That's what they said. They said I would be the, the representative representing Yarmouth County, because it's Yarmouth, you know, and, and, but, was it, was it Cunningham, or there was somebody on there from the municipality of Yarmouth, as far as I know, John? And he's, he stepped down for whatever reason, so, and they're looking for, for a representative from the, from Yarmouth County, not directly from the municipality of Aragil, but they should have still come to the, to the council, I think, yeah.
So if we're going to have to write a.
Right, Warden Donthermo.
Yeah. If, if we're going to have to write a letter, we should have a motion to that effect, or?
Well, technically, council wasn't asked.
Exactly.
But, but if you, if you want, I mean, we can, we can write a letter, you know, on behalf of, of Danny, or, or the municipality, and, and say, with respect, no, thank you. You know, if council is interested in learning more, perhaps we, as part of the letter, can suggest that they send us the minutes for their meetings, so that we can at least be informed in what, in what, you know, the current objectives are, and if we've. You are, okay, so, so perhaps we.
If we're going to send a letter, probably that would stop.
Yeah. Well, maybe we want to, maybe, I mean, I'm just suggesting to council, maybe that information's useful to all of council. If they saw that, that what they were doing was consistent with your strategy, or some of the objectives you'd like to achieve, you might, you might change your mind.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So if, if it's.
So we weren't, we weren't asked, we weren't asked so we don't have to have a motion.
It's cleaner with a motion, but certainly not necessary. So, I, I mean, I would suggest, I would suggest a motion, because Counselor Muse brought it to council for consideration.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Counselor Book.
I made the motion that we send a letter to this association, that we won't be sending a representative.
Okay, so you heard the motion, been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Move on to number five, which is. Move on to number five, which is financial report, attachment with three pages. CEO Muse.
CEO Muse is gonna focus on the high level. Um, you've had, uh, of course, every month, we, we do provide you with a financial report, so some of the story seems a bit repetitive. So I will try to, um, try to hit the high level. First of all, we are still projecting a surplus. Currently, uh, the surplus projection is three hundred and forty-one thousand. I will tell you, that's not the surplus that will occur. There are year-end entries that need to be posted. Um, the other intent, uh, would be to try to get the, um, funding commitments that you've made this year that were not budgeted in this current fiscal year. Um, for example, the construction around the trail, uh, was a commitment that we made for the Trail Association. They will be very soon beginning construction, and prior to beginning construction, they will require our portion of the grant. As you're probably aware, uh, ACOA is, well, you are aware, ACOA is a partner, but the, uh, the way that ACOA works is you, you typically have to spend the money in order to get it. So there is an advance, they can get some money in advance, but these kinds of projects can, can rack up pretty fast, and so, uh, they're, they're planning on, uh, on, uh, cash flow, of course, it's a cash flow issue for them. And so it, it also provides us an opportunity to, to look at this current year surplus and apply some of that surplus to that commitment, which is not recorded in your books currently. So that commitment, if you don't, if you, uh, don't recall, it was, uh, was, uh, I believe it was a little below fifty thousand, was it?
Was it forty something?
Forty?
Yeah.
Pardon me? Yeah. Fifty-one, one ninety-six, yeah, a little over fifty. So, thank you very much. So, yeah, so that's, uh, and of course, ten thousand from, from, uh, the association, and then sixty-one, uh, from ACOA. So part, if not all of that, will be recorded in this fiscal year. But the financial statements that you are looking at now do not have those recorded.
Okay.
Um, the other amounts that will come out of here that are not fully, uh, uh, posted or fully, uh, shown in these financial statements is the, um, economic development plan for Argyle. Um, so we are getting some of those costs in, by March thirty-first, all of the costs will be captured. And there'll be, uh, a, uh, eighty percent of that cost will be recovered, uh, through ACOA. So, um, that's another element that you don't, that you don't see a lot of on this particular statement, but by the end of March, it will be fully captured. Uh, revenues are showing, uh, a positive variance of eighty-nine thousand over our budget. That's due to, uh, to the, uh, to three primary reasons. One is, uh, an HST rebate that was higher than we envisioned, that's coming from, uh, the UNSM, um, uh, the de-transfer taxes that were conservatively budgeted, they're currently showing eighty-eight thousand in actuals, where we budgeted seventy for the entire year. I will say again, though, that that, uh, particular income is slowed. Um, it typically slows this time of year, and then picks up in the spring, uh, but I'm always cautious, I'm hoping it picks up in the spring, but you, you, really, it is, uh, it, it, we are spring, in the, in the mid to late spring, hopefully we have a pickup. It doesn't feel like spring. Uh, and anyway, so the third, uh, element was that the, um, uh, the tourism project that was, that was not budgeted at the time, um, was not, was not included in our budget at the time the budget was prepared, but, uh, the, uh, this is the, um, the trip to, uh, no.
Ilmaadlen.
Ilmaadlen, that was, uh, and what you'll see is, is, uh, is a thirty-seven or thirty-eight thousand dollar negative variance in our tourism budget expenses, that is offset entirely by revenue source. So that project did cost us zero dollars, uh, and benefited the community. So in terms of expenditures, um, general government services, um, there are savings all across the board there, um, a lot of them are small, uh, savings here and there, uh, just, uh, conservative estimates that, that we didn't, we didn't spend the amounts that we had, uh, that we had estimated. There are still some expenses to come in here, uh, in ter, uh, before the end of March, so I expect that the positive variance of seventy-eight thousand under general government services will be slightly lower by the end of the year. Uh, protective services, uh, we did have some, uh, a gap in service in property inspection when we lost our public, uh, our Director of Public Works, uh, that did cause, uh, I guess, a positive variance on the numbers, but a negative variance in service. Uh, so, uh, you know, strictly from the numbers perspective, it did indicate a, a variance. Transportation services were, were lower than anticipated, uh, both at the airport and also with, um, uh, estimates on consultation, uh, costs around the ferry restoration. So we, we were quite conservative in our, in our estimates there. Um, so some of that will, um, actually come out in the new year. So the timing around that is, uh, is part of the issue, or the reason why there's a variance. Garbage collection and disposal, uh, of, uh, quite a large positive variance there, and we talked about reduced volume of garbage. I think, uh, our residents are doing a better job at, at recycling, but I think there's also, um, uh, that is, uh, one of the signs of, of the economy. Uh, when, when the economy is a little lighter, uh, consumables are lower, and if consumables are lower, then your waste is lower. Um, so, and so, so that certainly is a way that we, an explanation that we attribute to that. Also, population, if you have outmigration, you have less people in the community, that could be the reason as well. It's, uh, those are, those are not reasons that we have, uh, those are reasons that we are contemplating, but it's not reasons that we actually physically found, okay, this is what happened. Other savings in recreation services, again, that was timing around services. We had, uh, active living coordinator, uh, position empty for some time, um, as well as the courthouse and museum, the heritage development officer, uh, position started later than anticipated. And, uh, and are there any questions around this statement?
Counselor Soret.
Uh, probably just one question that, I mean, it's, it's very good, what can I say? Thank you for shifting the, uh, East Public Water to utility, I see you put it on the bottom there, that's, like you said at the last meeting, that's where it should belong anyhow. Uh, my question is, um, the airport. Clare being gone, it's official, apparently it's official, while they have one more kick at the can, if, if I can go by what the newspaper said, you know, and, um, uh, they, they had paid forty thousand dollars per year for four years, but they could take that money out, and I guess my, that's my first question, if you can answer that. Question two, will that cost us more money because they're pulling out to the airport for our budget next year?
Um.
Can you answer?
Yes, I can. I, uh, the budget for the airport is still under construction, so we're still actually discussing what that might look like this year. David Hill, the, uh, the manager for the airport, has a couple of projects potentially in the hopper, uh, from an economic development perspective, that he's very excited about, but of course, you know, nothing is official. And, uh, so, uh, there's some work being done in that capacity. Uh, the Clare agreement, uh, Clare, Clare signed an agreement with, with the indust, with the Airport Corporation, and the agreement was to contribute forty thousand dollars per year for so many years. And they could back out at any time, and that they could get their money back a year after they backed out. That's, that's really the high level of the agreement. Um, we never factored the forty thousand dollars in to, as income in, in any of our budgeting, uh, because it was really a loan.
Yes.
If you think about what it looks like, substance over form, it was a loan, because they could always take it back, it was never, it was never a revenue that was recognized in the books of the, of the Airport Corporation. That being said, it did increase the cash flow of the organization by that amount. And so to return that cash to the municipality of Clare will be a challenge that the airport will have to, to manage. Um, I can't say whether that's gonna have an impact on our budget or not at this time, but, um, I know that, uh, obviously, when you, when you have to repay that, uh, that, you know, that's, that's, has to be factored into the, to the situation.
Thank you, yeah.
And on that note, tomorrow night, uh, I guess I am on behalf of the, uh, the Yarmouth International Airport Corporation, going to make a presentation, uh, along with Mr. David Hill, to, to the Clare Council, because, uh, I, I think there's, you know, still might be a chance that we can, uh, you know, maybe, uh, come up with something, so.
Good, thank you.
Anything else, uh, CEO Muse?
Um, just if there are other questions.
Any other questions?
I will actually, sorry, I, I said I, there was nothing, and then I have something. Um, what we typically do, we've had surpluses before, and what we typically do, I think it's important for the, the, um, for council, new and, and not so new, I didn't say old, um, and, and, and for the taxpayers, that, you know, the surplus, uh, doesn't, how, how we, how, how we deal with a surplus is one of two things. Typically, what happens in a surplus situation, it's a question of timing. So we, we expected something to happen at this period of time, and it didn't happen. But it doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. So it's a service that may be provided in the future. So typically, what gets done is there's an amount that's transferred to either an operating or a capital reserve at the end of the year. And so, um, we typically don't make a motion until April. Once we get our March statements, uh, looked at, we don't make any sort of decision to transfer funds until that time. The surplus, what, what should be understood is the surplus is to the benefit of the taxpayers of the municipality. There, we don't have any policy that says if you're, if you don't spend your budget, you gotta spend your budget, that's not how it works. If we have a savings in the budget, that savings is to the benefit of the, of the taxpayers of the municipality of Argyle. So if there are years where things happen that you did not expect, that produce something of a negative result, you then have, have a surplus that you, that occurred in a prior year, that you can offset that. So it's, it's a, it's, it's kind of a way, I mean, in, in some way, you could explain it in a, in a variety of different ways. One way is that it's, it's, it's actually smoothing, so like, you're not actually, the tax rate doesn't do this, you know, you got a good year, it goes like this, and then you got a bad year, it goes like that. A lot of uncertainty around that, around taxpayers. I think the certainty around having a consistent, um, uh, rate is, is important. Obviously, our costs are rising, um, for a variety of reasons, uh, the costs of our residents are rising, uh, for a lot of the same reasons, and so we're no different. But, uh, but the fact that we have a surplus is, is, is a very positive thing, and, uh, it is, it is applied to projects that are either committed already, or it gets applied to the future year, um, the fut- future year budget, in order to offset costs of projects that perhaps should have occurred last year, but are only gonna occur in the new year. So it, it, it basically, that's how it works. So I just wanted to be clear that, that the surplus isn't, you know, unless there is a specific motion of council that says you will use this, this surplus for a specific purpose, it is to the benefit of all taxpayers in the municipality.
So, yeah, so I guess, uh, let's say we wanted to, uh, I'll use Westport, make a sewer system in Westport, and we, uh, we have quite a bit of money in our reserve, we could, instead of raising taxes to, for the whole municipality to try to pay for that, if we had a bunch of money that was there, that we say, "Hey, yeah, we can use some of that, we are using that money for the bene- benefit of the taxpayer." Instead of raising the rate to pay for that, we can go, we could go, we could go in the reserve and use that, so it's for the benefit.
Yeah.
Of the taxpayer.
That, that's.
Is that a good example, or not really?
Not perfect.
Okay.
It's, it's, it works. I, I think that the last part of your comment is true, because we wouldn't have to raise the tax rate in order to pay for that. Um, you know, whatever that particular thing is, would be at the will of council. Um, you used the Westport sewer as an example, it could have been any example.
Yeah, that's right.
But, yeah, it's the will of council. If council has a specific project, and it had a surplus in the prior year, it could say, "We would like for that money in reserve to pay for that project." It could absolutely say that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay. Any other questions? Do we move the, uh?
Acceptance.
I'd so move the acceptance of the financial report.
Moved by Warden Dontrumont, seconded by Counselor Book, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, we'll move on to number six, which is other business and for this decision. Westport Schools Speed Limit Zone, one attachment, I think that was brought by Monsieur Counsel, Monsieur LeBlanc?
That's correct.
Go ahead.
Um, just to give you geographics of it, uh, Westport Schools back, oh, I'd say about a half a kilometer on, on a separate road from the main road. Um, the, uh, the school zone historically has always been of the whole, the whole ditch road, which would be the road the school is on, as well as a very small portion of the main road. So, uh, anyone passing by on the main road would, uh, would have a school zone there. Um, historically, it's always been fifty, it's fifty on either side of the school zone, and it was always fifty in the school zone. Now with the new laws, when you have, uh, fifty kilometer limit on each side of the school zone, that school zone becomes thirty kilometer. So, uh, a lot, a lot of negative feedback from, uh, the constituents saying slowing down to thirty is a bit much. Uh, historically, there's never been an accident, there's never been an issue, and quite frankly, I agree. There wasn't a whole lot we could do about it, until I spoke, uh, to, uh, the municipality of Yarmouth, where they had the, pretty well, geographically, the exact same, um, the exact same, uh, situation with the school of Maple Grove. Maple Grove is basically a half a kilometer back on a side road, and they had a small portion of the main road with the school zone. So they had it, uh, they had it looked into, they had it assessed, and they had the school zone reassessed, uh, apparently with new laws and new rules and how everything works nowadays, it was due for reassessment, and they found that the school zone should be moved to solely the road that Maple Grove is on. I just thought it's a great opportunity for, uh, our school zone to possibly be moved back to just the ditcher road. Of course, I wouldn't be comfortable doing this if I thought there was a safety issue, but given the fact that for sixty years, the limit was fifteen, there's never been an accident, I think it's pretty safe in doing so. So I guess what I'm asking council is that we send a letter to the, uh, correct representative. I believe it's, uh, the, the person who does the assessment is located at Bridgewater, but probably we have to send a letter, uh, first to, to Yarmouth, I guess, or whatnot, I'm not quite sure, just who we send it to, but I'd like for council to make a motion, that, uh, we send a letter to, uh, have the school zone assessed and possibly move back to solely the ditcher road.
Okay. Do you make that a motion, or?
Yes, I will, if, uh, sure.
Okay, so he's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. All right, six B, relief of taxes requests, uh, the attachment with three pages, I think that one is yours, uh, CEO Muse.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, uh, very quickly, uh, our policy is that, uh, no, no interest or principal amounts are, are relieved or written off without council's, uh, approval. This, uh, particular instance is four properties that were assessed to Her Majesty the Queen, uh, that were formerly owned by J.D. Irving. Formerly owned by J.D. Irving, uh, meant that it was on our taxable roll, and the PVSC inadvertently did not take them off the taxation roll, so we billed Her Majesty the Queen for the amounts that you see below, and, uh, there's no way that we can collect on that. It is, it's, 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 it's an error on the part of PVSC, and really should never have been billed in the first place. Uh, that's the, the first page of the memo, and so I, of course, would recommend that we write it off, 'cause there's no way we'll collect it, and, uh, it was certainly an error. Uh, the second memo attached is, uh, in relation to a program grant that was recorded. Uh, again, I think you saw this previously, there were some coding issues with our system that, um, triggered an interest, uh, revenue on this particular accounts receivable, there should not have been an interest component on it, and therefore, and therefore, I would recommend, uh, both memos recommending the, uh, write-off, I would, of course, recommend council to do that.
Okay, any questions? Counselor LeBlanc.
I'll make the motion to accept the memos, and that we, uh, we write off the request for the interest write-offs.
And motion and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried.
And the interest of full disclosure, the second bill was two hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-six cents, and the first bills amounted to approximately, um, looks like about two, a little over two hundred dollars, including the interest. So none of those were collectible, and, just for everybody's information.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to six C, personal protective equipment policy, this comes from Public Works, this is the first notice, uh, and you have an attachment of three pages. CEO Muse, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, sir, uh, this policy came from Director of Public Works, uh, I think it's, fairly straightforward, and it's. I think it's fairly straightforward and it's in the interests of health and safety of our staff. And there's no motion today. It's just notice. Nothing else to add.
Yeah, so this will come back to our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to six D, Municipal Alcohol Project. That was, you brought that, Warden Dontrum. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something that I met a while ago with somebody from Addiction Services and two of them, they had, gave me some reading, read literature here to read. It's very interesting. It, it, I have here three, the three studies that they've made in the town of Antigoneish, Wolfville and Bridgewater about mostly underage drinking, binge drinking and all this stuff. Then the UNSM has, has a program now, project, they call it Municipal Alcohol Project. There's a meeting coming up. I had said I would attend the meeting. It was gonna be in April. Then they changed the date to the time I'm gonna be in France. So, I was wondering if, you know, maybe we should, I thought probably it'd be wise to bring this to council anyway. I should have maybe done this earlier, but I, there wasn't much moving on this until I got the email from UNSM here today and there's a meeting to this effect.
The date of the meeting?
Twenty-third or something of May, I think, in Truro. Inviting all the councils from Nova Scotia to attend and take part in this. And what this says here, it says Nova Scotians, the issue is not that Nova Scotians drink alcohol, it's how we drink alcohol. You know, we've had problems with binge drinking and, you know, from the news that we've had some fatalities, you know, especially maybe in the towns where the universities were, you know, and things like that. So, I was wondering if we shouldn't, since the UNSM is involved, I think we should get involved also. And maybe if somebody would want to go to Truro to this meeting to see what, more about it and all this stuff, you know. What, it says, you know, one thing that municipalities can do, and we don't have maybe much of that problem is have bylaws or for establishment, drinking establishments to close earlier instead of closing at three in the morning, closing at two or one or something like that and all these. So, there's probably things we can do. So, I'm just wondering if somebody would be interested in going.
Is there a definite
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a definite date on that?
Yes.
Do you have a definite date? You thought it was the 23rd?
I probably have it, I probably have it here in, on an, in an email. Because I, yeah, they, they send me, send me, Larry Phillips in Yarmouth sent me an email and told me about this meeting in Truro. And then, a week later, I said, yeah, I'll probably go. Next, a week later, I get an email that there's a meeting in Truro on the 23rd or something like that. I said, what's, what's going on, you know? So, I asked Larry Phillips and Larry says, well, it's the same one. It was postponed.
The councillor, you are, might be interested?
Not sure.
Okay, well, maybe what we can do is, once we get the definite time and date and, you know, we can send an email to the council and, you know, whoever can make it can, you know, go, so.
I'm sure I had it here, but I
I'm looking for it here now.
I think I forwarded it, yeah.
You definitely forwarded it to me.
Right.
Victoria Day is on the 28th, yeah.
Okay?
Anyway, it's, it's, it's gonna be Lyle Goldberg
Oh, that's what it is.
Here, maybe alcohol, invite to province-wide working group. May the 24th in Truro.
May 24th, Truro?
Yeah.
What time?
9:30 to 3:00 in the afternoon and lunch to be provided, it says. So, it's 9:30 to 3:00 in Truro. So, that means one overnight stay, probably at least. Yeah, this comes from, from UNSM.
Okay.
Our RSVP by May the 17th. So, they don't need much
Yeah.
Need time, you know. And says, it tells you who to, who to forward your, your reply to.
I don't think anybody seems to be able to answer the question right now, so we'll, again, we'll email, so.
I just wanted, you know, to bring it up now and
All right.
I think, I know these people were speaking with the mayor and the municipality of Yarmouth also and, you know, maybe, maybe work out and go together or something, you know, that effect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to six E, Publico Medical Clinic. And who brought that one? Is that you, councillor?
I did bring that up. I don't know if our C A O would like to speak on it or if he wants me to. You're pretty well more versed than I am on that. But I, I mean, I've got it here, your email.
I can, I can start. And basically, the Industrial Commission approved yesterday commitment of up to $30,000 capital project for the Publico Clinic. The purpose of the project is to resolve a longstanding issue that we've been having on the, I guess, reliability of the IT, of the internet service in that area. We've, we've, the district health authority has used their own resources and we've used our own resources to examine the issue. We thought we had a cellular solution that was very inexpensive and it was inexpensive, but it was ineffective, as well as inexpensive, no offense to cellular service, but the, but the way that it was working wasn't, it was not reliable. It had to be, it had to be a reliable connection. So, the Industrial Commission, for a variety of reasons, unanimously approved the commitment. Of course, any sort of commitment of this nature, we would be, one, we will be incorporating that in a budget for the Industrial Commission for the fiscal year coming. I was very pleased with the budget that was presented. We've come a long way there and I was very pleased to see the numbers. It was very encouraging. And this, 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 I guess everybody agreed at the, at the table that this was a, not only requirement, but a necessary addition. And it's, I think, C A O Gushu eloquently said that at the time that we had constructed the clinic, we did not require that technology because we were dealing with doctors that were not interested in going into the electronic file management system, the Nightingale system. The nurse practitioner moved in and, and she requires a much more stable connection. But if we're going to recruit younger doctors that are coming in new, they're gonna want to go on the electronic. And so, it's not just about accommodating a nurse practitioner in that location, it's, it's predicting the future. And everybody was, was very much in favor of it. I think, I think it's, it's a strategic investment and so that's what was decided at the commission level. I think from your perspective here, I don't, I don't believe that a motion is required, but I believe that we will address that in, in the budget deliberations, understanding that that will come out of the budget deliberations. We could, I guess in theory, we could make a commitment to contribute that amount to the Industrial Commission in this fiscal year, seeing as we do have a surplus therein lies another opportunity to, to, to commit that particular investment in this fiscal year rather than next. In the interest, we are certainly very interested in resolving this quickly. So, if council is, is so inclined, it could make that decision today and then it would not be addressed. It would not be something that we would need to budget for in the new fiscal year. So, that's really what, what the choice is and on, in front of you. Many of you were actually at the meeting at the Industrial Commission level. And I was very pleased, on an all personal note, I was very pleased to see the kind of collaboration that happened amongst the three units on that issue.
Councillor.
I'd like to make that motion that we, we spent the, our one-third on this project into this, into 2012, 2013 budget that we have. Since we are in a positive figure, we have, what's the word now? We're into, we're into
Surplus?
Surplus, thank you. Mr. Chairman, we're into a surplus, so I would think we could be able to use that money. So, I made that motion that we do spend the one-third of the, up to 30,000 is what was agreed at the, in the area Industrial Commission. So, I, I make a motion that we, we honor that, up to 10,000.
Okay, any more discussion? Motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Carry. Okay. All right, we'll move on to number seven, Correspondence and for Information. Resolution. Okay, I think I can, that was a resolution that was passed in the House Assembly, brought by Emily Christentromon, basically congratulating and thanking the municipality of Argyle and the volunteers for putting on, I guess, you know, really good Grand Final, the Grand Jeu. So, you guys all read it, so. All right. And we'll move on to seven B, Affaires Acadiennes, Bellinomair Funding. This is a one-page attachment. And this is the, the, the Acadian Affairs who sent us a response for, we sent them, I guess, a letter and they're happy to confirm that they've contributed $4,800 for the, for the delegation from our municipality going to Bellinomair. Our warden is going. I guess, C A Muse, is that a few more details or?
Yes, the intent of the, of the funding was also to, because this was originally a, what is the word in English?
Twinning.
Twinning, thank you, of Publico and Bellinomair. It was thought that the Ravey de Pomcou, who was initially involved, would also send delegates. So, in our correspondence with the Acadian Affairs, we indicated to them that, that the municipality would be sending one. And, and we're envisioning that the Ravey might actually send two individuals. And so, what we asked for was the financial support to assist them in their endeavors. And so, if they end up sending three, that's, that's fine, but they're only gonna pay 50%, 50% of the costs for two delegates, delegates from the Ravey and 50% of the cost for our delegate. So, money's in the bank. So, that was really, really good on the part of Acadian Affairs to support, support that, so.
So, at the previous meeting, we made a, already made a motion that we would, I guess, sponsor or support the warden going, representing the municipality, right?
Correct.
Correct.
It should be noted that when we first did the twinning, that there was no cost to the municipality in the initial voyage. So, now, you know, being, being so many years later, there's, I think there was, there was a commitment made.
Okay. Warden Dontrum?
This is a 10th anniversary celebration and 10 years ago, I didn't go. I was invited, but didn't go. I was getting ready for something else. I was campaigning, ready, getting ready for election. So, I didn't go, but our, at the time, Emily went, Neil Leblanc, and I can't remember who else. Talking to Joyce Stantromon, she's the president of the Ravey Kunku, talking to her today and she's, she's still planning on going, but she's got a detached retina and she's going through problems right now with one of her eyes and this and that, but she still plans on going. Her sister, sister, Aina, that works for Acadian Affairs in Elphac, she's going, representing the Acadian Affairs Minister.
Okay.
Government is sending her, so. But I'm not sure, and Father Maurice Leblanc, who's a great friend of Bellinomair and been there a few times, and he's going. So, I think, I'm not sure exactly who yet, but I know there'll be three or four of us anyway.
Okay. All right, we don't need no motion or anything, so. Okay. We'll move on to seven C, Western Counties Regional Library Minutes of November 15. You have the attachments. If there's any questions on the minutes, they just sent us the, the minutes. And I see they've, in our, in our mailbox, there was also a library report, March 2013, and the board profile was none other than our warden, Aldrick Dontrum. This would be really good reading material.
I, I got those last week at the meeting and I just put them in the mailboxes today.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
I hesitated, picture in the corner.
So, if there's no questions about the minutes of the Western Counties Regional Library Board Meeting of Thursday, November 15th, we'll move on to the next item, which is seven D, Clean Across Nova Scotia. One attachment, a one-page attachment. And this one is Clean Nova Scotia. They've, they want us to take part in the two-day province-wide cleanup, Clean Across Nova Scotia, taking place April 19th and 20th of this year. And every spring, we do our own, I guess, garbage pickup where not-for-profit groups, I guess they're, are sponsored by the municipality to pick up so many kilometers. And apparently, I think we're trying our best to align our, our pickup with this. Is that what we're doing?
That's what has been done.
Okay, that's what's been done. Okay.
Because they
Go ahead.
They Clean Nova Scotia, Clean Across Nova Scotia, they, they was, can supply us with some, some of the garbage bags and that stuff that we use. So, if we, if we align it and do it at the same time as they, that during those two days, they will supply us with some, pay us some money.
Yeah, basically, we're killing two birds with one stone, maybe.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on that one? Okay, move on to number eight, Funding Requests. Eight A, Redwood Cup Funding. Do we have any additional information from that, C A Muse?
There is an updated financial information here. I don't know that there's considerable changes to it. For this particular event, and I should caution that, that the event has yet to be officially announced. We had requested, we had been requested to contribute an amount to the Yasta, to Yarmouth and Acadian Shore Tourism Association to support this, this particular event. It's a major event. The ask was for, initially was for $5,000, but there was a provision that it could actually double based on, based on the fact that there was, I guess, a broadcasting cost that was unknown. So, so we now know that that is, that that will be a cost of the project. So, the municipality had been asked to consider a contribution of up to $10,000. Clearly, what the municipality of Argyle decides to contribute is, is, is the decision of this group. is, is the decision of this group. We, we did talk about this in camera, made no decisions in camera. Obviously, we don't do that. But, but I do wanna note that it was initially brought to this council to discuss in camera around the confidentiality around the event. And I believe that it would be appropriate for council to consider a motion to, to fund or not fund this particular project. And I think the wording of the motion probably should be, should be a little less specific to the event itself. It should, if, if you choose to support this particular project, I would suggest that the motion would be to contribute XY, whatever that amount is to your liking, to the Yarmouth and Acadian Shorts Tourism Association for, for the, the organization of a special event occurring in fiscal 2013, 2014. It's a little less information than, than, than we're comfortable with in a motion typically. But if, if we're going to make a fiscal commitment, that must be done by motion, and it must be done in public motion, in the public. So I think at this point, the time is, the time has come for, for that decision. I don't know, Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
Just wanted to add that we are permitted to say the name of the event, but that we're only supporting the bid for this event in the amount of. So that's just a slight difference of what I've, I've verified with YASTA on that.
Okay, councillor.
A question I have, and it's because I don't remember. Yes, I, maybe go back on my notes. Were they not gonna apply for a, apply for a grant? And I'm possibly wrong. Were they gonna apply for a grant or was it, it wasn't gonna go that route, I guess? Does, do you remember, CEO Muse? I don't.
Grant from?
Like, a grant organization, I'm sorry. Apply for a grant organization. Yes. Yeah, yeah. I don't remember hearing that either, but I'm just wondering why they wouldn't do a grant organizations?
And I'm, I think I, I'm gonna defer to Chris here as well because this is a memory issue, and I guess I'm getting older.
Old, old.
Older, old, I'm getting old, okay. That's, that's, I, it seemed to me that the request may have predated the change to the policy, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
I think it was just the necessity of confirming the funds for the bid to be successful. So we're not, we're not contributing the funding to the event itself because the event itself has not been successfully attained by YASTA. We're, we're approving the funding to the bid for the Redwood Cup, not for the event itself right now. So they need to confirm a certain amount of money for the bid to be successful, of what, from what I understood.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so, so the motion that I initially advised you on may be, may not be entirely correct. I mean, we're, are we, we're, we are committing money. We're just not committing money to the event, we're committing money to the bid.
Right, which would in turn, if the bid would be successful.
Yeah.
Commit the money.
So it is committing the money.
Really, it is.
So, so it's committing the money. It's, it's a bit of semantics.
It is.
But, I mean, to, to your question, I don't recall that, I don't recall whether they have applied through the regular.
Grants to.
Grants to organizations. And I think it was because of the speed at which they had to, and I mean.
And I think it was prior to our policy being, or was it?
I'm not 100% sure on that.
I don't think it was.
Warden.
Maybe not.
But, so, so this is, again, a, a unique situation.
Okay, councillor.
So if, if council does decide, decide to, to approve an amount and the bid is not successful, is the money refunded back to the municipality?
We would, we probably wouldn't disperse the funds. And first of all, number one.
They need them on record that they have them if need be.
Correct. And, and number two, I think it would, it would kill the motion. If they were unsuccessful in the bid, there'd be no, no reason for them to, to obtain the funds.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion? Councillor.
Me again, but I, it's, I know, I know, but just something I'm gonna throw in here. I, I don't feel comfortable about, there's a lot of secrecy. We're on YouTube or camera here, and I don't feel good about it. Does this have to be done? Did, did we, did we approve, did we approve or say, yeah, in principle, yeah, that we'd support them? I think we just, I thought we had said, we, we supported them. Yes, and did we send a letter?
No, there was, not, no, there was, no. The, the, I mean, we can't really go into the details of the discussion that's in camera because of the, because the nature of the discussion had to do with the specifics of the event. But, you know, the purpose, we did not, there was discussion, and I guess I'll, I'll keep it high level. There was positive discussion. But, but there was no understanding, there was an understanding that a commitment can only be made in regular.
Council.
Council. So that was made very clear to, to council and, and those presenting, that, that really the commitment has to be done by you guys and, and, and that amount is entirely, entirely up to, up to you. So this is a unique, strange situation. We have developed a policy that council has approved, and herein lies another strange exception. You know, and, and what we find is, some of these exceptions around these policies that we tried to, to develop, we want to stick to the policy as, as much as, as much as possible. Otherwise, why do you have a policy?
Yeah, exactly.
So in this particular instance, and in a lot of instances, it's these special events, similar to our presentation that we, that we've received here today. It's these special events that you can't really expect them to put in an application in the grants to organizations in a traditional manner. Because they're not sure they're gonna get the project. And then when they get the project, it's, it's, everything needs to happen immediately. So, you know, council's faced with an unusual circumstance. Council does have the ability to override the policy that's said in the policy. If, if you, you feel that there, there's a commitment to be made outside of the, outside of the traditional, traditional ask, you do have the ability to do that. I, I don't know what the municipality of Yarmouth and the town of Yarmouth have committed in terms of amounts.
I wondered, yeah, what they.
Is, are those approved? Are they approved? Oh, confirmed, I'm sorry. Town of Yarmouth, $45,000, municipality, $33,900. Room levy of Yarmouth, $5,000. Those are confirmed, government funding at the municipal. Province of Nova Scotia did confirm $94,000 as well. The total budget is $473,000. A lot of that comes from corporate sponsors that, corporate sponsors that are generated by the, I guess, the organizing committee, which is not a local organizing committee. And so I believe the municipality of Clare denied the request. And the other revenue sources, I can't say, are confirmed.
I'll, I'll just say that from the presentation we had, there's not even a doubt in my mind, it is gonna be great for Yarmouth. It is gonna be great for Yarmouth. Our residents, I'm sure, will go in, you know, and that not even a doubt with the numbers that we've heard, which I can't discuss, of course. Not even a question, it's a great thing. And I guess if somebody wants to make the motion, you know.
Warden.
I guess one of the, the big things is, is that we're, YASTA can't, can't make, make the announcement. You know, they have to make the announcement, and this is why we've been, this is why the secrecy and because, you know. But I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion that we, we grant $10,000 for the Redwood Cup.
That's the ask, yeah.
For the bid.
For the bid, yes.
That's the word.
On the other hand. Can I see that?
Sure thing, I can distribute that as well. Is it attached? It's probably not attached.
Before, hold on a sec.
So that wasn't an actual motion?
So how much? I guess my question is, what were they asked for?
I believe that was, yes, I believe they were asked.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, my, my motion stands, $10,000.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor? Councillor? Oh, okay, that's all right, that's all right. I guess you wanted to second it, but councillor Muse beat you to it. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, and I'm not pinpointing anybody here, but just to say that I wish we had got some of that information and maybe our CEO or Chris, maybe you got that, then it was too late to send it. But I wish we had got some of that, unless it was private just for you people. I wish we had got some of that to read before, but, but I have no, by the way, I have no problem to support the motion.
No.
I'd just like to add that in, that's all.
And, and again, I don't wanna add more layers of secrecy. What I, what we have in front of me is an up, is the most up-to-date budget for the project. You would have received.
Already.
The budget figures. So this is no different, I mean, there might be slight differences, but it's still the same, yeah. I just wanna make, be clear.
Thank you.
You don't have this because we just got it.
Thank you.
We just got it today. That's, that's, that's the reason, we're not trying to be secret around it. But it, it really does reflect the budget that you have seen.
That's being fair, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for pointing that out.
So everybody's clear with the motion? Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry. Number nine, notice of motion. Anybody have a notice of motion for upcoming meetings? Having heard none, we'll go to number 10, which is question period. Any questions from the media? Number 11, in camera. So we're gonna go in camera.